Kids come to my place, so it's like the consulate for a couple of different countries. That's fun.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is seven P M. And I will now call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. I don't have any changes, so I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Uh, next up is approval of the minutes from our special organizational meeting on November twenty first. Has everyone been able to review those minutes?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion, we approve those, that's ready.
I'll second that.
All right. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Next up is communications and correspondence. I don't have anything. Well, you know what? I'll share this good news right now under communications and correspondence. We heard back from our friend Alan Sabans with C S W Energy, and this is very good news. You may recall that the town has been attempting to get solar panels installed at our town landfill for several years now. Well, the town of Portland and Green Skies has successfully secured a state solar incentive for the solar project at the landfill. So we are getting solar panels at the landfill. This is really, really good news. I want to thank Andy Bauer and the Clean Energy Task Force for all their work on getting this, uh, pushed through, as well as, uh, Rob Cleat and Alan Sabans, who have been instrumental in helping us. So just to give an understanding of what this will entail. So Green Skies is going to, now that they've won the bid with Eversource, they're going to develop and install and maintain solar panels for the next twenty years, uh, once it's installed at the landfill. And the town of Portland will receive on-bill credits managed by Eversource for several municipal buil- buildings. So we'll get credited on our energy bill for, um, municipal buildings that we submitted to them to be credited. And the average annual benefit to the town of Portland is expected to be approximately one hundred thousand five hundred dollars a year. So this is a savings over the next twenty years of two million dollars on our energy bill in town. So this is a really, really big win for the town. It's, it's energy efficient, we're going green, and we're saving, we're saving green at the same time. So it's a, uh, it's a good deal for everyone. So thank you all. Thank you to this board for supporting this project. And according to Alan, it looks like the, uh, engineering phase will be this winter, twenty-three to twenty-four, with construction starting in late twenty twenty-four. So more to come on this, but it's, it took a long time to get to this point, so we are there. So that is the good news under communications tonight. All right. Next up is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? And is there anyone online that wishes to comment?
Anyone else who wants to want to online?
Sure. Uh, it looks like Joan or Ellen. I'm not sure who, but can you put them up, please?
Okay.
Hey, Ellen, give us just a second so we can turn the volume up. One second. Is it, is it ready? Can you try talking again, Ellen?
Sure. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that, that'll work.
Okay. I just wanted to be real quick about this. I know that tonight you probably have a list of appointments to be made. And I want to speak to and endorse the reappointment of all those members of the Board of Planning and Zoning who are willing to serve, uh, further terms. The Planning and Zoning Commission, in my estimation, has done some remarkable work over the past five years and could not be better constituted than it is currently. So I'm hoping that you'll, uh, reappoint all of those members who wish to continue their service for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Are there any other comments online? And last chance in person. Okay. Moving on, we will move on to item seven on tonight's agenda, which is our monthly budget report. Finance Director Tom Robinson is with us this evening. And I want to thank Tom. I know he's been very busy with our annual audit, but he still made time to put our monthly budget report together. So thank you, Tom, for coming out tonight.
Good to see you, Tom.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So, starting with, uh, the general fund revenues, um, look at the accounting in oh, uh, one, oh, oh, one, one. Property tax prior year. You can see we're actually positive. We've had, uh, some, some, uh, properties have transferred. We've had some collections. We've also had some collections from our tax sale proceedings that were currently, uh, running. And, uh, the attorney is working through that process. So we've seen some positive collections there. Uh, oh, oh, two, one, two, is it? Again, we got that municipal revenue sharing grant. Um, this year it came in at two thirty-seven. It's one of the ones that when we go through the budget cycle, uh, myself and the first looking, we don't, uh, get notice of this in the, uh, in the packet that comes out in the biennial, as well as anything that we get from our, uh, groups at C C N. So it's one of those ones that, you know, it comes when it comes, and, uh, it, uh, it's a good, good, uh, thing that comes. Not saying that, but it'd just be nice if we kind of knew some type of dollar value.
Be nice to budget it, is what you're saying.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, three, oh, four, which is miscellaneous finance. There's usually not too much activity in there, but, uh, this year the state, as well as, uh, myself and Ryan, we tried to make a big push on the uncollect, um, the C T big list money. And, uh, that monies, some of those monies did come in, so we just, you know, those were just items from miscellaneous years of, uh, of, and, uh, we were able to receive some of those funds. Oh, oh, three, two, eight, structural permits still continue to be strong. Last year revenue was strong, this year revenue continues to be strong. Oh, oh, four, oh, one, which is on the next page, investment revenue, uh, rates continue to stay strong. Uh, T D's paying very well, stiff is paying very well, Liberty's paying very well. So they're, uh, you know, the rates are coming in strong. And, uh, definitely different than, um, you know, better than we budgeted. Uh, we budgeted higher, much higher than the previous year. And, uh, it's still coming in. We also kind of still have, um, a decent amount of article money on hand. So there's always some revenue generation from, from that. And once that goes away, you know, that's going to be, uh, yeah, we won't be making revenue on that base. But many of those projects, our P O's are out. We're going to get approved tonight. And we're just waiting on delivery of some of the items. Any questions on revenues?
Um, was conveyance in for this month, or is it still?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, what is it? Was it thirteen thousand?
Okay, thank you.
There are still quite a few, uh, collections that aren't in for the, uh, for this month, yeah, for November, but you, what is supposed to do? Okay, and the expenditures, um, on page two, uh, fourteen, oh, oh, seven, one of the accounts we'll probably have to watch. Uh, we do have the, we have the budget referendum we had, um, for the pri- probably for the primary, possibly two primaries for the presidential election. So, uh, there was, uh, you know, that's a, a number that has swayed based on the activity. There was at least a couple of discounts this year. So there was, uh, monies, uh, spent on that, uh, process flow. But, uh, you know, still come, overall grant, the overall, uh, department is still doing well, so it's funny to raise attention to that. In, uh, you know, technology, consistent items is normal. Um, we're, 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 uh, fifty-nine percent of our budget left on overtime. And often upon, it is troubling us as well as, um, we have fifty-one percent of our budget left on computer network maintenance. Those are always things that, you know, probably would always like to budget a little more in, but, uh, you know, it's not the type of items that you gotta use them when you need it. So. And then, um, oh, twenty, fire department, um, most of the departments, uh, budget was good. Just on the general equipment repairs that I am, even with the hit, prices are higher, repairs are expensive. And that kind of goes for any of the care items. Oh, twenty-three, uh, next page. We talked about this last time. Police, um, the licensing software, if there's any further licensing that comes in, they're probably going to hit over the budget on that. Thirty-two, uh, thousand counter things to do. There were a few high dollar value trainings that were in play. And then, uh, obviously police private duty is always something to watch, but there is a revenue generation that'll generally, uh, outperform the expense. Oh, thirty-two, page six, waste services, um, you know, this is more items that are, that are being thrown out at the transfer, the transfer station, the track, and maybe a little bit more, uh, directed at this point. But, uh, we need to, that's one of the ones we're probably going to budget a little bit more in that lineup than fiscal twenty-five. Sixty-one, oh, oh, one, uniforms, the contract was approved with a slightly higher, I think it was six fifty amount. And, uh, when we did the budget, we were basing it on a six hundred dollar amount. So that would be the number of people. Plus additional fifty dollars will run the order on that if everybody buys their uniforms, which does and does not happen. Oh, thirty-six, page eight, ground maintenance, uh, equipment repairs. Um, I know that the need has come to us and told us about a few of their, uh, lawnmowers that are, that are aged and troubled. And, uh, so there, you know, you see some additional rentals and some repairs and just some encumbrances in play. So that's one of the accounts we'll have to watch, uh, throughout the, uh, year. Uh, fifty-four, spoke earlier today, the senior center director, um, thirty-one, oh, oh, six, on page eleven. Matt Tuma left their instructor fees remaining here at six hundred and seventy dollars. That's one of the accounts that we don't have a lot in it. Uh, if that becomes, and it's a, it's a, uh, there's a revenue item for programs and there's usually programs that generate. That's where, uh, instructor fees come from. Um, when it's a program that really doesn't generate, then you need to charge it with a program services. So if, uh, you know, becomes where they're able to generate more revenues, then maybe that's something in the future that, uh, the director will monitor more. Service contracts are really tricky ones, uh, communities departments with, uh, beach back, uh, elevator repairers and generator repairs and things of that nature. Uh, fifty-five, municipal agent elderly. This year we did increase that budget quite substantially, but it still seems that, uh, you know, riots are being, uh, must be requested and are being fulfilled. I, uh, you know, in fact, only got fifty percent of that budget remaining on the van driver statements. So that's something usually that, uh, that the director and, uh, first looking clearly will monitor throughout the, uh, remainder of the year and make decisions on, uh, what's best, uh, use for that. Uh, uh, seventy-one, you did talk too much about seventy-one, and it's been, it's usually, the department goes through smoothly. Uh, what we're seeing in this is we had funded it for quite a few high dollar value retainments, a few that were expected. There were also a few other, uh, other ones that were not high dollar, but reasonable dollar values that are causing it to be higher. So we'll keep watching that. Um, but there's still a few other high dollar people that are, you know, leave after, uh, uh, January. So, uh, that's one we'll have to watch. And that's what I have on these expenses.
Questions for Tom?
Tom, just a quick question. Um, we had a, uh, initial hit on when body cameras for the police were brought in in terms of like the equipment and stuff. Um, how has that gone to, into year two right now? What's been the impact of all the storage and that program?
Well, we've run, we have, the storage is, uh, new in house. So that was how we did the storage, we didn't go to cloud. So there are servers, there's, uh, at least two servers that I can recall off the top of my head will purchase for it. Um, it's possibly like the seven or two. Um, and it's, it seems to be working out. It seems like the I Q department, uh, you know, can, uh, extract information when needed. Um, thankfully, people can have had to extract too many times, but there has been a few times that, uh, they've done the diligence and pulled up, pulled data. Uh, but that's another one that, uh, I don't remember the exact, uh, term. It's either four to five years, but in that forty-five swing, it's going to be another big, that's going to be a big hit that will have to be funded. So that's, uh, you don't last very much longer than the allotted period of time. Uh, so that'll be like a new, like an update swing again. It's just like anything else, they don't, uh, that cheap or, you know.
There you go. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom?
The majority of that project was funded by us.
All right. Cause we're all set. All right. Tom, you want to stay up though for our fourth quarter transfers?
Oh, yeah.
So the next item on the agenda, item eight is a resolution on our fourth quarter transfers. Do you want to take this, Tom?
Yeah.
Here, you want, you can just use my.
Yes, we're going through the fourth quarter transfers here, and, uh, those are for line items, um, kind of actually line is the actual whole departments that are over budget. But the goal of this matter is to get the department to a positive budget. Uh, so the Board of Selectmen had an overage in the global budget. Uh, so we, uh, that, and that's directly related to the cost of running all the various needs. So, uh, that was in the program services. We're going to add three hundred and twenty to that line item. It was actually, uh, it was more than that, but it's, that's what we're adding in there. Uh, the next one was the probate court. So the probate court was, uh, we needed to add a hundred and eighty-eight dollars in to that, and that was mostly due to a slightly higher fee than we had budgeted. There was transition in between the people that run that and sending us the data. And, um, we would be, uh, we put the same number, I think, as the prior year, and it was slightly higher. Fourteen, oh, seven was election workers. Uh, and that was two, three, eighty-eight, so there was more election workers needed. And, uh, election supplies as well at sixty-nine, zero, 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 uh, six hundred and fifty for that. So that'll get that into the positive. There were grants for that, so we did have some grant activity. Um, recorded in other, uh, grant revenue, so that was positive. But you don't, you don't offset the expenses. You spend the money of overage and then you, uh, uh, transfer funds in. So, um, the expenses in this would have been higher. Uh, the next, the department was technology. Uh, technology had overages and overtime, they had overages in licensing software. And the main overage was, uh, computer network maintenance. So, uh, we're going to, to make that a positive, uh, we need, uh, six thousand two seventy-five, and that was, uh, for consulting activities. There were some licensing transitions, but we will allow items for, uh, the, uh, cybersecurity policies uh, that we were doing for some of our cybersecurity insurance programs and, uh, obviously overtime. Uh, the next one was the inland wetlands commission. The enforcement officer just added more hours and, uh, budget. Similar, we talked about earlier, the municipal agent elderly, van driver stipends, uh, there was a rise given. Um, therefore, uh, monies had to be moved in to cover that overage. Same thing with gas, the gas and diesel for that department, three eights, three e six. So the global overages was two thousand one, three eighty-two.
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand, two one, eight, three, twenty-one thousand, three eighty-two. And, uh, so we're going to just take that right out of contingency and move that, uh, to these other accounts to make that positive. Contingency with storage.
Any questions for Tom on this?
Um, Tom, the technology is, we, we just talked about the police and how we're, we're doing maintaining all that data in-house. So I would assume that is including all that data too. We're talking about the technology that's required for the town hall, town services, but also it must be for the, the, um, maintaining the, the data for the police cams, right?
To the technology budget?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's necessarily truthful. Uh, I think that what, what, what did cause it, obviously was overtime for various meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, for some of the, uh, just activities that were prepared by the director to attend. Um, I think in the licensing software, it was probably more directly related to the licensing for that cybersecurity changing to, uh, like a stronger review of, uh, the, uh, the, uh, activity as it comes through our network. Um, and then, uh, but, but, and some of the rollout, uh, probably some of the, the, uh, the actual hours of the computer network maintenance. Yeah, that, that is, I'm going to definitely hours for, for those, uh, for that rollout procedure. There was also a lot of, uh, computer rollouts that were involved and, uh, uh, and some of the, uh, again, the cyber, uh, components doing the review of that, uh, of those features, uh, rolling out some of those policies, uh, rolling out, uh, different servers, you know. So that, that's a, that's really what the network maintenance and then anything that's like a stopgap that our guys can't, uh, work on. In this fiscal year, there was a large portion of the year that we didn't have an existing technology coordinator.
Right.
So that's, uh, you know, was, uh, was falling at David and then the hard times at home.
Right.
So, you know, I, I think that's why you're seeing, you see so much of a higher than normal in the computer network maintenance.
Yeah. You're actually, that, that's the piece that I was thinking of. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the fourth quarter transfers? There being none. I'll entertain a motion.
And make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approval of the fourth quarter transfers as presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, Tom. All right. Next up is item nine on our agenda, which is a resolution. This is a contract agreement with Kovax Construction Company. And after that, we have another resolution on a contract agreement with Burns Construction Company. The Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, is with us this evening. If anyone has any questions, these are our American Rescue Plan Water and Sewer Projects. So if you look in your packet, the yellow resolution is the one before us now. And this is on the river pump station on Co Avenue. So we had gone out to bid on this. If you may recall, we, we did have to allocate additional funds for both, you know, for each one of these projects. So the total cost for this pump station project is six hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. And I believe, Ryan, oh, sorry to interrupt, uh, work would be able to begin over the winter on the pump station, right?
Yes.
So we approve this tonight and work will get started this winter, after the new year, I believe. Would someone like to move along the resolution?
I'll do it. Uh, you wanted me to read it out?
Yeah, you can read it, sure.
All right. I, I, um, the resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, December sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, contract agreement with Kovax Construction Corporation resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorize this first selectman, Ryan J. Curley, to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland, a contract with Kovax Construction Corporation, three twenty-one Rig Street, Oxford, Connecticut, oh, six, four, seven, eight, for bid number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, six. Co Avenue River View Pump Station upgrades. The total base bid contract prior to any other required change orders is approximately six hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. Any further discussion on this? I think we're all excited to get these projects going. Absolutely. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. The next item is a resolution, contract agreement with Burns Construction Company. Uh, this is our wa- uh, Russell Avenue Water Main replacement and road reconstruction project. And this one, after it was publicly bid, came in at seven hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Now, this would begin in the spring, right? After April fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Awesome. Someone like to move?
I'll make a motion. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut. December sixth, twenty twenty-three, contract agreement with Burns Construction Company Incorporated. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorize this first selectman, Ryan J. Curley, to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland, a contract with Burns Construction Company Incorporated, three hundred Sperry Ave, Stratford, Connecticut, zero, six, six, one, five, for bid number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, five. Russ- Russell Avenue Water Main and Road Reconstruction. The total base bid contract prior to any other required change orders is approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion on this? All right. I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. So great to get these projects moving along. All right. Next up on the agenda is item eleven, appointments to boards and commissions.
Ryan, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the appointments to boards and commissions to our next meeting. The, um, on the twentieth, December twentieth.
Okay. Second on that? I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I just think it would be nice if, if we could get, or for me and everyone to see, but mostly me, if we
nice if, if we could get, for me and everyone to see, but mostly me, if we could get a list of each party that's putting up, you know, who they have to put up so I can, and we can vet each, vet them and look at them ourselves before the night we, we vote on them.
Does that sound reasonable to you guys? Would you, so we can all vet each other's candidates, I think it might not be a bad idea.
I agree with Sean, like I, I'd like to see the list prior to the voting so we can kind of look at what's going on. Now that we've got these board of commission papers here, we can put the list together and determine by next meeting. Who we set for each commission.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
We can just, we can coordinate afterwards on how we get everybody, all the names.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll postpone appointments to December twentieth at our regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sean, so we'll move on to item twelve, refunds of excess payments.
I'll make a motion for a refund of excess payment, Nissan Infinity LT LLC, four hundred and eleven dollars and forty-nine cents.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you, John. That was well done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
That, by the way, is a nod to Ralph.
I know, I see him on Zoom, he's listening in, so I'm sure he's smiling right now, his camera's off, but I'm sure he's.
We miss you, Ralph.
Next up is status reports, I have a, a couple items I just want to talk about. I do see our chair of our Parks and Recreation Commission is here with us this evening and I, I just want to thank our Parks and Rec Commission and our director, our assistant over there. We had a wonderful tree lighting that had to be bumped up today, at a moment's notice, and they knocked it out of the park, it was awesome. So I really want to thank you guys, you guys did some great work, it was a great turnout, we had hot chocolate this year courtesy of Sarah's on Main. So I really want to thank Sarah's for, for donating the hot chocolate this year. And next year, I think we're going to incorporate a rain date into the plan, so we don't have any last minute surprises next year. But, and the parade will be back next year too, so thank you to Youth Services as well, Courtney Fitzky. So it was, it was very well attended, Santa was there and I think you're all on the nice list, so, so, but we'll, we'll have to see. Next thing I wanted to talk about was the survey, so did everyone today get a postcard in the mail?
I did.
Yep.
So I, today's the day that the postcards, I believe, hit, they were supposed to come in Monday, but I guess it took a little bit longer than anticipated. But one hundred and sixty surveys have already been filled out as of today around three o'clock this afternoon. So people are filling out the surveys, so please, I encourage you to tell everyone, you know, it's important that this is the, you know, what this town, what this board and the Board of Education decide on the school facilities is, is so important to the future of not just our children who are in the school system, but to the town as a whole. So we want to hear your feedback, so please fill out the surveys, it'll help us to do, be able to do our job that much better. So thank you for, for those who filled it out already, and please help spread the word and get those surveys filled out. It doesn't take too much time on the survey, I'm going to check with you next meeting, all right, Sharon? All right, thank you. And that's all I have for sta, does anyone else have status?
I attended my first Board of Ed meeting last night.
I saw that, thank you, John.
Yeah, I got, I have lots of notes, I'll try to consolidate them, they, they push a lot of information through in a short window of time. I'll just kind of hit the high points, they had election of officers, Laurel Steinhauser was elected as chairperson, Meg Scotta was elected as secretary. The student representatives gave a very good report, and I'll tell you what, I'm, that, that school is amazing. They held their snowball last weekend, they had a hundred and ninety-eight young adults at that thing. And they collected toys for donation, and they said they got a very good collection of toys. They had two band concerts last week, the, the Portland Middle School and the High School, and Charles said that the kids really have, you know, for, for a couple of years, the arts kind of were hammered by COVID. And he said, it was amazing, both the middle school and the high school bands and choruses were tremendous, so he gave them kudos. The kids are also doing a pajama day where they pay a dollar and they get to wear their pajamas, I guess, to class. And donations from that will be made to Connecticut Children's Medical Center. And they said that the class double L football game, the Portland Cromwell Football Game, is this Saturday at Rentschler Field.
I think it's Sunday, is it?
Saturday.
Saturday, ten thirty in the morning at Rentschler Field, and I guess we're playing for the state championship. They, they had a presentation by some of the science teachers in seventh and eighth grade, and I, I'll probably mess this all up, but I thought it was pretty amazing stuff. It's called NGSS, they have an NGSS science unit at Portland Middle School, Next Generation Science Standards. And they, they gave a presentation about this, essentially what they're trying to do is instead of having, you know, the seventh grade deal with one type of science and the eighth grade deal with another, they're trying to mix their method, their messages together so that, you know, the kids can pick up on it quicker. And they also are doing something called a cue board, where the kids ask questions and put them on this question board. What they're really trying to do is to drive these young folks to, they, like the teacher said, we're there for questions, but we, we, we really want them to try to figure things out themselves. And they gave some examples of, of what they're doing in the area of science and biology and chemistry. They said they're, they're trying to make, make science fun while discovering things on their own and developing their own, own skills. It was very impressive and I think Portland's doing some great stuff. They have, I'm, I'm not going to give names, but they noted that there are four retirements upcoming at the end now, coming up now or by the end of the school year. And another individual, a paraprofessional, has now got their teaching credentials and they're moving on, and everybody was very happy for that person. Enrollment, they had enroll and update, it's up about three students from last year, it's where they thought it would be, but it's, it's solid and strong. They had, they attended a Teacher of the Year ceremony at the Bushno, I guess they do this for all teachers of the year around the state of Connecticut, and our own Sam Tucker got Teacher of the Year, and Sam, for my kids in high school, they loved him to death, he's a great guy. And the Board of Education received a leadership award. And then for upcoming things on the calendar, December twentieth, the Board of Ed is doing a retreat, it's a Wednesday from three to seven P M. And then they will be reviewing their budget, the superintendent's budget, and start that process right after the first of the year.
Thank you, John, thank you for being the liaison. Does anyone else have any status reports? All right, we'll move on then to public comment, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Hi, Sue, would you like to come up? Just state your name and address.
My name is Susan Malecki, fifteen Gildersley Road, and I would just like to address the board in terms of folks who we are looking at for appointments. Please give very strong consideration to anyone who is serving on a board or commission who is looking to be reappointed. I think that on a number of fronts, particularly water and sewer, and on P and Z, we've got some very big things that are coming up. That really require folks that have some background knowledge of what's going on. On P and Z, we have three women who are looking to be reappointed, who have served for numerous years and who have the training that is required for them to have for these positions. We certainly always need new people coming on the boards and commissions, that's how we get people that are willing to be reappointed. But I think that if we've got a board or a commission that is working successfully and is doing good things for Portland, please consider keeping them in the jobs that they have been doing because we've got, you know, we've got Brainerd Place to finish up, we've got the Plant and Conservation and Development, which, if it's a good plan, the state will be willing to give Portland more money. So I just ask that you consider giving people who have served well an opportunity to continue to serve, as well as some of the new folks, we've got some really nice folks that are willing to put their toes in and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment in the audience? Anyone online? All right, we will move on then to item fifteen, which is Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion, does anyone have anything this evening? It's very quiet. This does not normally happen.
Enjoy it while you got it.
Exactly.
Wait till January.
We all get out easy tonight, all right, so we'll move on to follow-up items, I, I don't have anything under the follow-up items this evening, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second that. Okay, Mike got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike. Bobby was close.
Bobby's really close. Forty-one minute meeting.
All right.
It's a win-win.